At 6 o'clock, at 6:05, and so we're ready to kick this off. And once again, this is the follow-on to the meeting we had a couple of weeks ago. Collin Center presentation. We have four individuals here from the Collin Center. Monica Lamboy, Bill Lapini, Rick Kinsley, and Ray Shirtlift. And they obviously have responded to questions you had two weeks ago, to questions that have been forwarded and sent in to us. And then, of course, part of the whole deal tonight is for you to ask questions of them after they make a brief presentation than last week, okay? So without further ado, I will turn this over.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Say good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm Monica Lamboy, Senior Associate at the Edward J. Collins, Jr., Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. I'm going to let each of the team members introduce their backgrounds as they get up to respond to different parts. By my background, academically, I'm a civil engineer with a degree in city planning, urban planning, and also have worked in local government for going on 30 years now in a number of change areas, including Oakland, California, Washington, D.C., and Summer Hill. So our agenda tonight, mostly agenda is for you, because we talked way too much last time. But the reason that we structured the two-meeting format is we knew there was so much information to convey in the first meeting, that we wanted people to have the opportunity to read, to absorb, to think about before coming back tonight with even more questions. And there were a lot of really great questions at the meeting and in the community meetings. But I want to say, this is not an end point either. I think one of, I hope, goals for our team tonight is to hear from you some of the feedback on some of the alternatives, so that we can keep refining and keep improving and coming up with, hopefully, a smaller group of alternatives that have some real positives around them. You know, we can take this process which started as kind of a negative, right? There's not enough resources to meet the needs at the municipal level, to meet the needs at the school level, so we, something has to change. And hopefully, we've been able to talk to you about, you know, why those, the forces that are causing that change. But how do we turn this for an upside? How, at the end of the day, does the district end up with absolutely outstanding schools? It will end up that way because of parents and students who are participating, the best thinking, the best ideas in terms of education. So I'd like to really, over the course of the next many months, which we'll be working together, to flip this into a success story instead of a story of, "I'm going to lose something." So maybe we can start talking about what do we want to gain? What are the things that we can create positive out of this process? So, by showing hands, how many people were at the last meeting two weeks ago? Okay, thank you. And thanks for the new people for coming. Again, you know, testimony to the commitment of the residents here in coming out for meetings like this. So our last meeting, we broke the information down into three pieces. The first section was really sort of trends that are affecting the districts, both in terms of fewer young people living in the area, fewer students enrolling, more students that were choicing out other opportunities. We talked about the budget pressures that have affected the district and the towns in terms of constraints to town resources, in terms of, you know, normal budget growth for salaries and for operations, and also rapid increases in social education, sort of setting up this really difficult tension in the past four or five years of budget between how to get the district budget approved. We then moved into a series of best practices, ideas that we had that could improve the district operations. Some of them were to save money, others were to enhance transparency, enhance the public confidence in their schools, so that when we have to come together and make hard choices, we're hopefully doing that from a foundation of confidence in each other and confidence that if a choice has to be made, that you know that this really does have to be done. And then we went through relatively quickly a series of alternatives. So, anything on this that we talked about last time? No, okay. So, since then, we wrote notes as we were talking, as we were talking as a group, and we also received some very thoughtful emails from the group of participants. So one I want to hit on right away, which is about the process. One of the comments was, "Well, the last format," and tonight, too, is really kind of very stagnant, right? We sit here, you sit there, and there's not a lot of cross-conversation happening like we did in the community conversations. What I'm hoping, after we sort of do a lot of this information sharing over the next many months, we will come back together in a series of forums that are more conversational, that will structure together with the district, together with some of the towns and the task force that have that conversation component. So bear with us for one more, more auditory style. But I want to get back to the neighbor-to-neighbor conversations, because I think that's what's going to work best to come up with a positive outcome. But then we have a series of data questions that are in your handout. My A.D.'s showing and my eyeglasses. So the first one was, "How many school choice students are there? What if school choice participation went down as a result of reconfiguring? And how does that affect transportation?" So in the table there, we give you the raw information of school choice as of the current school year. What you'll see is 14.3% of the total district are choice in, but it's heavily weighted toward the middle school and the high school. Both are nearly 20% school choice in. Following that is Hubbardston with 15% of the student body at school choice. The district does send out four buses to pick up kids from different communities to transport them to schools. In terms of the forecast, what we did for school choice is, to the extent that there were sources we could use, we used those. Where we created some of our own forecasting, which I'll get to later, we moved the school choice numbers in the same way that the resident student numbers are moving. Those people who love data can debate me anytime you want on that. But we thought it was a pretty good way that if the trend was going down in one area, that it would follow with the school choice as well. Although families have choices, which is part of why great schools here will help more people choose here, which will, again, help increase revenues. Question about separate education students, how many come in through school choice? I thought, I think we had a thoughtful conversation about how are the extra services funded? And the home district does contribute towards the special education costs for the school choice in. And then at the bottom of that page, the slide about classroom size. So, thank you for the people in the room that noticed that one of our slides was off. We did go back and review that slide, and it was incorrect. So we had put in the current, the current October 3 enrollment for each of the different schools at the class level. So the table at the bottom shows the different classes, Section 1, Section 2, Section 3, how many children are getting to these classes and each of the schools. So it is different than what we had last time. So I apologize for that. There was a snafu with the data. That's actually going to flow through one of my other tables, so we'll get there as well. But hopefully, this is more close to what the principals and the teachers are familiar with in your schools. Although now that it's the spring, it'll be a little bit different as well, but we're using a snap-up from October 3. But one of the things this points out, and we were trying to point out in the slide, is sort of the difference in class size in different schools. And you can see that there are some definite variations. For example, the 4th grade in Hardwick, one of them has 15 students, other schools have 22. There is a classroom, two 6th grades in Ruggles Lane that are 28 and 29 students, one in Opam that is 32. I'm sorry if I spelled it. So there is some disparity between the different schools in terms of class size. But it also shows you how few classes per school there are, which makes it very hard to fill out the classrooms. At some point, you have so many students, you have to decide, "Am I going to open a brand-new classroom? Or do I collapse it and then end up with a pretty large enrollment?" I think one of our goals in the new plan, one of the ways to make them great, is to try to get the class sizes equitable. And also, in a, it's a policy question for the community, you know, what do you think is the right size? The district has standards, and how do we fund it to a level that we think is correct? There's a question about the CAPS program. Were they included in the alternatives? This is a program that's in Hubbardston. It's one of the collaboratives that the district participates in. And they take up 3.5 classrooms. I don't know where the other half is useful. Oh, OTTC, okay. Occupational therapy. So, thank you for catching that. That was missing in our alternatives. So for any of the alternatives, there are actually four more classrooms that are occupied if we use CAPS. We'll address that later. But that was a really good catch for people. Thank you for doing that for us. There was a question about the extended-day program. I feel like I'm kind of talking too much. Was that considered in the alternatives? The extended-day program is available in three of the schools right now. It's morning and afternoon extended day. It's elective if people want to participate. The parents do have to drop off the students to the schools, but they're held in the cafeteria because there's a pretty large participation rate. So in terms of any alternatives, that could be factored in to any of the schools, so that there is still options for the extended day. We do recognize that if it moves from different schools, that that would be a longer drop-off for parents. So that would be a factor to talk about going forward, you know, one of the strengths or perhaps weaknesses of different options for the extended daycare. Under letter F, a question about pre-K. Whether we consider the pre-K, could it be expanded to full day? It sounds like there is some pressure or some weight risk out in the area for pre-kindergarten or daycare. There is ample room, both at the high school level, to create a vocational program around early childhood education, although the district would have to hire adequate staff to do that. There's room to do that. There's also, in each of the alternatives, we have it in various of the elementary schools. So this is actually, I think, one area for dialogue going forward, is how to really make the pre-K program great, because the capacity is there, the demand might be there, and it's a great way to introduce students to the district who may then go into kindergarten first and really make this district their home. So this would be an area for further discussion. Question about fees. What sorts of fees could be charged? We have not come across an example where fees have been able to overcome, you know, substantial budget challenges, although they can be used to fund extracurricular programs and things like that. More typical is a community would maybe approve and override Prop. 2.5, where they would voluntarily add additional tax dollars, property tax dollars, to fund their schools. I don't know if Bill and you just want to talk a little bit more about that, or we should wait till later. Anyways.
Well, sometimes they'll fund specific projects as opposed to just the money for the schools.
So, what Ray said is, sometimes they'll fund specific programs or specific projects. Much of our exercise, again, is about how to save funds, make more funds available. We haven't really talked about the revenue side of the equation, whether there's a community interest in increasing the, where the taxpayer contributes, but that certainly can be factored in. Okay. I think there may have been some concern on that.
So, the only thing I would add to that about fees is actually what we're seeing statewide is that the trend is away from fees, because many, many districts have seen sort of the unintended consequences of fees. People who put certain types of athletic fees in place, and amazingly enough, they see decreases in participation. Or put extracurricular fees in place and find that the fees are so small that actually collecting the fees is more work than the amount of money they're bringing in. Those kinds of things. So actually, the trend, very slowly turning statewide, is away from fees.
Michael Johnson, just joined us, he's a professor at UMass Boston, worked with us a lot on the values questions. Just to wrap up this section, we did want to talk a little bit about how we costed out the bus routes. So most of the routes the district had, if not all, are double loops, where the same driver will do one pickup and drop off, and they will go back and do another pickup and drop off. Those are at a cost of $61,000. In all of our alternatives, where we said add one bus route, add two bus routes, we're talking about a single route, so we costed at half of the double route. But again, to repeat the point from last time, the cost of the bus is very modest compared to the cost of some of these alternative savings. So where we eventually have a conversation about transportation, inherently, it's a large district, inherently, we're always going to have some substantial travel times. But we don't think bus scheduling should be an impediment to coming up with the optimal and the shortest time. Our personal goal, as we were sort of doing the cost, was to try to keep the routes under an hour. I think I'm going to stop there on data. I feel like you guys agree with these things. Actually, let me point you to one of these handouts in the back from the new data that we created, this raw data. Attachment 1 is to, we're calling it the top, no-change scenario. One of the things we're trying to do is give the communities this best information so that you can potentially come up with your own options by looking at it. But we have the current and projected school enrollments for all schools. The top row is school year 2017. These are enrollment figures from October 1 last year. We then projected those forward to 2020 and 2025, using the same methodology from the study that was done for the district by Mezda, but we actually started with 2017 numbers. So it's the same methodology, but we've used real data from the current school year that we're in. And it shows you basically how the enrollment, which is 2,248, drops in two short years, three short years, to 2,085, and is projected to continue to go down to 1,900. And then for the elementary classrooms, middle school, and high school, we showed how many classrooms were used. A particular note I want to point out between, is to look at the middle school column. If you look at the top row, there's 24 middle school students today. The 2020 number is a substantial drop. We're talking about 70 students dropping in a short period of time. And this is because the, and we showed it on the screen, the number of younger students has gone down, with fewer younger students. So they're now working their way up into the middle school grades, or projected to. And then that same drop hits the high school in 2025. So this lower number, as they're getting older, is affecting the other schools as they're flowing through. Just like a population boom would do the same thing, where if we had a lot of kindergarteners, they would then start to flow through the upper grades and into the middle and high school. We did the same numbers for residents only. So in case people are interested in that, I'll look at this table, okay? So if you wanted to look at residents only, if we wanted to consider changes to the school choice policy, those numbers are there. And then at the very bottom, it's just a repetition of the school choice enrollment by school. But I thought, hand it here.
I was just curious. I know when you talked about school choice earlier, it showed that school choice increases quite a bit in middle and high school. So are those numbers, do they come into consideration in those two charts?
Yes. So the top one has all of the school choice in it with no change. So whatever reduction was applied to resident children was also applied to the school choice children. The next one down is resident only. So you'll see that the influence of the school choice children, particularly at the high and middle school, where when they're taken out, we end up with very low utilization rates in the middle and high schools. That's one attachment. Attachment number two is really for ease of use. We took the 11 alternatives within the lengthy report, we're all on different pages. We sort of took all of the relevant data points and put them on one piece of paper for everybody to be able to kind of look at. I would want to point out the savings columns. I put "subject to change" on the top layer. The error that we had in terms of the student enrollment is actually going to ultimately affect the dollar amounts for each of the different alternatives to the, it's going to end up lowering the savings. So I apologize that we had this glitch in the data. I think I'm going to re-release the larger report with the updated numbers in it, and we can send out an email to everybody letting you know when that's available. The relative amount will stay the same, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. The relative savings will probably stay the same, but the actual dollar amount will change, so I'm sorry about that. We did go ahead and add a 12th alternative in response to one of the questions. One of the questions was asking if we could do another alternative that closed Ruggles Lane. We had done a single Ruggles Lane closure, and in 12, we have a multi-school that involves a Ruggles Lane closure, just to make sure that we have a fair and multiple options for everybody to consider. On the last attachment, we did the last three, sorry, 9, 10, and 11, using residents only to, it was somewhat of an academic exercise to say, there's always been questions about the merits of having open school choice. You know, does it cost more to have the students than they actually bring in, et cetera, et cetera? So we just did one where we took out the school choice students, and it actually puts the district to the negative. There's not savings in the first year. The city just hypothetically, you know, snapped their fingers and they were all gone. The district would end up hanging out in the first year because of, I think, unemployment or the loss of revenue.
Yeah, the loss of school choice revenue.
And then a little bit of second.
The loss of school choice revenue is applied against any savings in the school choice annual revenues right now are $1,000, $1.86 million. So that, I think, I think the conclusion that you can reach from this is...
Can you talk next to the microphone so we can hear you?
Okay.
Thank you.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay, sorry. So, as I said, the district receives $1.86 million in school choice revenue. So we net that out against any savings, obviously it eliminates some. As Monica said, the ultimate savings, including these, will be recalculated, but I think looking at the difference between having choice in and choice out, I think the marginal cost of having those kids is far less than the revenue you receive on account of those kids.
So we just wanted to do that exercise to see what that meant. Yes, ma'am?
At the April meeting, I asked if you had average numbers of what a totally closed school. Do you have those numbers now?
We don't have average numbers to close a school. I mean, some of that would be, you might need more furniture in the other school. I don't know that there's that many offsetting costs. If I could ask you, what would you think some of the costs might be to close a school?
I have no idea. It's one man's decision.
Yeah, we know from our last project that we did with a district smaller than this one, that there really were not any substantial changes, because they would do it over the summer. So if you had to move furniture, that could be moved from one school to the other. If there are pieces of equipment, you would want to consolidate, get the best technology equipment that you could between what was available. So I'd like to reserve that to when we get to a smaller number of alternatives. And then maybe we could, at that point, sort of weigh, are there any one-time costs that are more substantial in one alternative than another alternative?
So you don't think that those costs would have any bearing on which alternative we would choose?
Not saying that. I'm saying it's probably very nuanced for each of the different alternatives, and it's probably not worth the exercise of trying to figure that out when we have 12 on the table. But we'll be working with you over the next, you know, nine to 12 months. And I'd like to do that exercise a little bit later when we have something more specific, and then we can work with the district to say, if we're moving from School A to School B, are there particular types of equipment? Is there some improvements that might need to be done to the cafeteria that we would do that are more specific to the option considered? But I don't think, I don't think that they're impediments to any of it. I think it's a nuance, but I don't think it's going to impede any of these from happening. There's nothing, there's no big capital needs that have been identified that are specifically to the consolidation, at least so far in the process. Yeah, let me just, I want to make sure I cover all my stuff, so I can stop talking. I really would. I'm looking forward to stopping talking.
Do you have a need to that?
Yeah, sure.
At the last meeting, I had asked about alternatives on what the towns would do for the building. So that would be a big cost in factoring in which alternative might be the best, whatever the town's options.
She asked about what alternatives there might be for the reuse of the different buildings. There's a little bit of that in the report. We can talk about that a little bit more as we go along. I wrote your question in here with not a detailed answer, because each site is unique and would need to be thought through, independent from the other. And then there were some more process questions. And then there were some alternative questions. But I really want you guys to ask questions. I wondered if we could maybe structure our conversation around different topics, perhaps, so that we can sort of focus on, you know, a particular area of the idea, just as an idea. Does that sort of make sense, that we can organize how we have the conversation today? Or do people just want to ask questions? I'm open either way. Do you have an opinion on that?
No, actually, I just had a question on the data, so that I'm clear on if I'm understanding it correctly. So you added Alternative 12, which was to close Ruggles Lane and new Rain Tree. And that leaves you at the 78% use rate of the classroom space, but Alternative 1, which closes only Ruggles Lane, leaves you at 83%. Am I, I'm confused as to how much cost?
Yes. So in Alternative 1... That's a good question.
Please, we can help you with your thing.
I'm not, I can't say for sure, but it looks like in the B12 scenario, there's fewer classrooms, because you're also closing Berry. And so the denominator there is lower. So I think that may be the reason.
Alternative 1 closes Berry, too.
But 12 closes New Rain Tree well. So there's fewer available classrooms when both of those schools are closed?
Hi, Craig. So the difference in the denominator is, in the top one, only Berry classrooms disappear from the denominator. The other one, both schools do. The reason there's more classrooms used is that three of the other schools in A1, nothing happens to them. So they are, the room is full, but there's not the numbers of children to hit the target. Basically, if the other ones were able to consolidate more classes, bring more of the classrooms up to the minimum students per classroom that the district has targeted, whereas in the first one, only Berry closes and pretty much the other schools don't remain in place. So for example, New Rain Tree, which is very highly underutilized, in Alternative 1 sees very little change, because it's really just Berry that's closing. And in that case, we have to move into a couple of schools, but it's not enough to really use those schools robustly. Does that make sort of sense? Is that what you want to say?
Isn't it also because in the A scenario, just the 6th graders are going to the middle school?
That's true.
And in B, well, 5th and 6th.
Thank you. The other point was that in the A scenario, only the 6th graders move into the high school, and the B scenario, the 5th and 6th graders move into the high school. And the B scenario, the fifth and the sixth graders move into the high school. Middle school. Sorry, correction. Middle school. So, I wrote down, are you working, topic ideas or questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just two questions.
Okay, we're just going to do questions.
Oh.
Yeah.
So with all the talk about closing the different schools, I'm curious why we haven't considered closing the central administration building, which seems, I don't know if there may be like a grand plan, and why don't we haven't reconsidered closing that building and having administrative offices within all the open space in the middle and high school, so it would have a minimal impact on the students? And in the Collins Center report, one of the, a couple of main issues where the cost was higher than today now, was administration, professional development, and information technology. So I would just like to see options where we focus on cutting those higher costs and have a minimal possible student impact. Not to say that you don't consider some of the others too, but it just seems like you want to go with minimal student impact.
We're going to start writing some of the questions down, so that we can keep a record of the questions that have come up. The, we can certainly look at closing the administration building, and how much square footage that would occupy if we moved it elsewhere. But it's a pretty small building relative to the square footage of the high school, middle school that is empty. I mean, it could be part of a, conceivably a package, but there's really not a lot, it's not a very large building, the administration building. So, but certainly we could say, along those lines of, you know, how can different buildings be used for other purposes? We could weave that in. It's not going to use up a large amount of space, though.
I'm just curious, there may also be a good reason. I don't know if, because it's a newer building, are there rules as far as state reimbursement? Because what I'm thinking of in the bigger picture is, you know, Stetson School down the road, which is constantly a building, and maybe not, but it seems to me that Stetson would like to lock that property, but again, I don't know enough about it, but it's just a thought. Whereas in our smaller communities, it seems much more difficult to find, say, someone to find use for some of these private schools, which are so rural and not...
So one question is, could Stetson potentially use some of the space? That, we can explore that with them as well. And the general point was that perhaps there might be more uses that could reuse some of this space that's more centrally located with some of the space in the smaller, more rural towns. We can talk about that more, but let's record. Right now, I'm going to record it, because I don't have an immediate answer for that.
I just want to clarify, in the question, alternative V12, it says new Braintree would move to Oakham. Does that mean that the preschool would be moving to Oakham in that alternative?
So thank you for asking. I want to, I want to say one caveat that we talked about last time is, for our exercise, we just move numbers of students from one school to another school to see if there's enough seats and enough classrooms in those. That doesn't mean that's the ultimate decision, that those children will go to the other school, because there's different ways to configure and to register students or space. So, I want, I'm going to say this like every meeting, that we just do that to make sure there's enough seats, but the policy of how students will be assigned is an area for discussion. Each of them has assigned a location for the pre-pay. That's more central, but it moves from version to version, and we didn't put it on this table, so I'm sorry. It's usually Berry or Hubbardston for most of the parts in the different alternatives, but it moves more central either way.
Same thing with district-wide special education.
The same thing with the district-wide special education. In each of those alternatives, we move the special education programs to a more centrally located school than they are at currently.
A task force for the last, you know, year and a half with a lot of these others, and I think we've got all the pretty open mind about it, also on the Hubbardston Select Board. And so, coming into reality, based on our last meeting, I reported back to the Select Board what transpired in our April meeting. And the way I sort of honestly answered it was, you know, a lot of the information, although more detail, was basically just a reiteration of what we had done as a task force in collaboration with the school committee already. So, as we discussed it further, as just our singular one out of five boards, you know, the sentiment was, well, what are we going to do? We're not going to close the school. It's stupid to close a school. I don't know if I worded that correctly, Christine. We would have something close to that. And so I just think it's sort of an exercise, and I know we have to discuss the data that we have, the alternatives and all that, but I really think it's irresponsible not to, in parallel, talk about additional uses, as was discussed with Debbie. At the same time, in parallel, just to double reiterate that, that we're talking about all this sort of closure stuff. Because public sentiment is so against any closures right now, that if we're not showing that we're making an effort to do that at the same time, it's just going to get worse. So, this is the comment.
Right. Thank you.
I just want to kind of follow up with what he's saying, because a lot of the towns, when we talked about it last, we're going to have to do the two-thirds vote on, on closing the schools. I don't know if it's every town, but I know some towns you had brought that up last meeting. And we have to go through the process of that. That's very time-consuming, and it's going to be a lot of help in the community on letting people know, you know, exactly why their school might be closed. So, I agree with what he's saying, because we really have to look at alternatives. At the end of the day, this, there should be so many more people here, if their school's going to close. And when that call happens, that town ain't going to want their school closed, no matter what they're meant to do. Because they're not here.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Right.
So, we've really got to look at it way, way in the wrong direction.
One question I would like to ask you, when we get to on the agenda and for the next steps, those kinds of things, like how do we get more people engaged? What kinds of topics do we need to talk about that are even not on the agenda yet for discussion, or that need more deliberation? So, I want to go where you guys are going. Let's, let's do that before we end. Thank you for both of that.
In the cafeteria meetings that we went through, the community values, there wasn't really any conversation about closing the school brought up in that building meetings at all. And it was all about better ways to utilize it, and better ways to fill up the school. And so, I agree with these comments that we're hearing from others, that this really should be part of the board recommendations for how to fill the school with alternative programs and those.
Yeah, I'll, I'd like to talk about, what we wanted in the conversations was to hear what's important to people. And one of the questions was something to the effect that, given the fiscal realities that the district is facing, what creative ideas we have, do people have? So we didn't predispose anybody to talking about any one option. We tried to have really open-ended questions, so we could hear from you what some of your priorities were. We heard, you know, financial stability, you know, great academics. We heard a lot is really good, and they're in two reports, there's a specific values report. But I think we're kind of at the moment where we do also still have to talk about closing, because there is just a lot of space that is not very well utilized. And, and I think we've been trying to convey, and you can tell me if you've heard that, that there are academic impacts from spending so much money on space and not being able to have relatively equal class sizes, not being able to offer all of the services that the students could really benefit from. Part of what I said at the beginning is, how can we put this conversation into positive? If we can come up with ideas that save money here, that we could redeploy to make these schools really, really great, what would those investments be? Instead of paying for extra electricity and water or whatever, what do we need to make really great schools? And how could we use those dollars for that point, so that the kids get the best education?
Yeah, thanks, thanks to your question. The community conversations that we had last year were focused on a wide range of ideas to improve the school district, and were intentionally not fixed on one direction of change, that is, school closures, because there's so much more. Our report, I believe, has maybe 14, 15 different recommendations for changes in operations, and administration, finance, and programming, and so forth, along with the school closure. But there is another connection, which is, how can we make the best decision among the alternatives that we've listed here? And what we have here are things like short-term savings, long-term savings, numbers of elementary classrooms, percentage of our elementary classrooms used. But there may be some additional performance metrics that aren't on the sheet. In fact, in our final report, we identify, we associated some specific values that came out of these community conversations with all of the recommendations, including the school closures. And so, if there's a metric, for example, in the final report, something related to academic achievement, that is an example of something that we could measure, or at least we could ask you by how much you think academic achievement might improve for this alternative, as opposed to that alternative. That will help us to make a better decision, but as well, also emphasize that it's not only about dollars and seats.
I wanted to ask Bill if, because you've got the educator, you could talk about some of the challenges of these very, very small schools, and paint an aspirational vision of what could be a great school.
So, I wish this were a conversation about how to grow a school. But what, what I've seen in the data in, in central and western Mass is that that's just not the case. And so, you know, that, we, we wouldn't be being honest with you. There are reasons, I mean, we showed, two meetings here, data around school choice. And we showed how you were and remain one of the top districts in bringing in students in school choice, however that number has declined, and the number of kids going out has increased. And, and that has to do with lots of things. One of them is that more people are competing now for school choice. In other words, before 2008, there were a number of districts that did not participate in school choice. That means they didn't take students, their students could still leave. They didn't take students. And now they do. Why do they? Because they've seen declines in enrollment, and they're trying to sort of maintain the floor as well. So I'd love to tell you, here are the strategies to increase there. There are, have been discussions here, and should continue to be discussions about having other cities, other towns join. But we also have to consider some of these other things. And I'll just expand, as I did the last time on, some of the things that Monica has said. I mean, one of the problems when enrollments decline like this, and you keep a number of schools open, is that you begin to make decisions around, you begin to make decisions for other than educational reasons. You made a decision as a district around the location of a pre-pay program for other than programmatic reasons. If you were making that as a programmatic decision, you would not have put it in Braintree. You would not have. It's not where your population is, it's not where the numbers of students are, you wouldn't have put it there. You would not have put an autism program in that building. You would not have. That's not a programmatic decision. It's a space decision. Okay? If it were a programmatic decision, it would be where the students who access that program live, and it's not. It would be in a place where there were more sections of a grade level, so that students could be included, and it's not. So, so those are examples of things that begin to happen as a result of having those spaces to occupy. We believe, I believe personally, that, that, you know, three sections or so of a grade level allow you to do lots of things that you're finding that are waning in your school. Those kinds of academic supports, those kinds of enrichment opportunities for kids. Those, as you're spread out with one, two sections for grade-level schools, those people begin to be split where they exist at all. They're traveling between schools, they're spending some, some inordinate part of their day in traveling and not in working with kids. Lots of things that are unintended consequences of things you're trying to do begin, begin to happen as a result, and therefore suppress the quality of what you're trying to do. So, the recommendations that we've made that are centered around those numbers of sections have everything to do with a critical enough number of students to be able to program appropriately, to be able to create inclusion opportunities, to be able to provide the kinds of supports in the building, in those fewer buildings, that actually support and create better programming for kids. And those are the educational pieces that, quite frankly, as enrollments continue to drop, in five different locations, become harder and harder to provide.
Ask for it. What can we create?
Well, I, I try to touch on that, right? You can, you can provide that kind of remedial health, you can provide those kinds of enrichment health that right now you struggle, if at all, to be able to provide, right? And you can create that kind of programming for, for kids. I mean, we were, we were asked the question, how does this kind of adopt, I saw a question here somewhere, this is the difficulty of the question, right? How does this kind of play into schools of the future? I don't know. And neither do you. I mean, a lot, there are other people who are getting paid lots of money who don't, don't know the answer to that. I think what we have to do is create flexible spaces, right? Is create flex, class size is always going to be an issue. We've shown a number of ways here, how this, this smoothes the edges on those class sizes. And I'm a big believer in, and you can do a lot, you can keep class sizes within certain numbers, and you can't. Your, your rules as to how kids are assigned, and five elementary schools prevent that from happening now, happens in some of your places, with 13 kids in a class, 14 kids in a class, and not in others where there are 32. And so you can't, you don't smooth, you don't smooth those edges. And, and, and to create kinds of flexible opportunities for, for, for kids and, and classes. That, that's what you can do. And that, that enables you to sort of, to be ready for whatever comes in terms of those relatives. I mean, I was talking with Ray for a moment here about buildings that are, that are building sort of major spaces in the, in the school. And many of them, you know, that's, that's a new hot thing, to build, create spaces where kids can create, where kids can exhibit. And many of those schools, quite frankly, I can tell you that are doing it, have no idea what they're doing and why they're doing it. Right? But, but that, I think that's going to be important. And, and you don't need, what we've seen in a number of places, is you don't need a creative major space in a brand new middle school to be able to do that. Many people are doing it in libraries or other kinds of spaces. So, or your space is flexible enough to allow your teachers to be creative and try to work into what they're trying to accomplish.
For your scenario, how many students per classroom did you have for, to make sure all the space is taken? I also have another question, what are you defining to empty? Which to my understanding is not that it's like empty classrooms, they're, they're having all kinds of...
So, there were a couple of questions there. The first was, what were the class sizes we were using in the alternatives? They varied by grade, but they were the district standard, so I think it's 22 to 25 for K1, 2, 3?
22 for K1, 2, 25 for 3, 4, 5. We use 22 pupils for kindergarten, first and second grade, and 25 pupils for the later elementary grades, as opposed to what you have now, where you have a handful of classrooms at the first and second grade level with 27 and 28 kids, and we've got a sixth grade with the same, it's 32 kids.
And then, talk about unused rooms. So, what we did was, we, for the elementary school, they stayed predominantly in their classrooms. So, we are counting here the classrooms that they will occupy, but there's other rooms like the arts and the music room, which are left available for those purposes. So, so I believe rooms that were dedicated to specials stay there, they're, they're not used in our, our alternatives, we're not taking them away. So, a music teacher's not going to... So I believe rooms that were dedicated to specials stay there, they're not used in our alternatives, we're not taking them away. So a music teacher's not going to have to be on a cart, or an art teacher is not having to be on a cart in the scenarios that we're looking at, the alternatives we're looking at.
Right. I was thinking of, when you have thirty kids in a classroom and there's an extra room next to it, you kind of have to have those two rooms if you have thirty kids in one class. So if that room is necessarily empty or unused, it's still being utilized and it's still really necessary. So I was wondering if you were backing that, backing that?
Well, I think we're trying not to have a classroom with thirty kids in it. We're trying to get them again down to the twenty-two, twenty-three level so that they can be contained within their room. But I think your bigger point is, all of the schools need some flex space, right? At the end of the day, I think they will need that, and we can make sure that that's available for things that we don't know about today.
So that's a great question, totally separate from this issue about buildings, right? And closing buildings or anything. I guess I would ask us to step back one additional step and ask why we have, and we brought this up in the first, the last time we were here, why we would have policies that really have nothing to do with education that would allow the thirty-two kids to be in a class when there are thirteen at another school? Why do we do that? And we, well, we do it within a regional agreement for reasons that have nothing to do, I'm an educator, and have nothing to do with education but are set up for some other set of purposes. And quite frankly, one of the things I hope we sort of incent you to do is to think about those kind of policies through that lens of what are we trying to do with our schools?
Can I just clarify the numbers for a moment? Because in the last meeting, there was people in the audience that raised their hands at the word of the state of our schools, and wanted to clarify that it was not in fact a twenty-eight classroom or pupil classroom, but rather two classrooms. So I just want to make sure that that was, that we're not looking at, is it really a class of twenty-eight, or is it two classes?
On the handout, we have a corrected table. The page after the agenda that says responses to data-related questions, the table at the bottom is actual classes as of October third, which is the date that state uses to register your enrollment. So these are actual classes with actual students, with actual teachers.
So none of the classes, so Harwick doesn't, it has one first grade. So secondary, okay, so I just, so how many kids are going to be in a class?
But it's been since October third that they've gotten, it was since October third. Probably now has three first grades, but that happened after the October third date decision.
They heard of October first day.
So I'm sorry, so this is the amended?
So let me take a step back. The state records, all districts report data from the very first week of October. This happened to be October third, it's October first, second, third, something like that. So we're using that as a snapshot for...
I just want to make sure that we're not talking about like, oh, these classes have twenty-eight kids, when potentially they still have twenty-eight kids. Like, we're talking about it as if like, we don't want your kids to have to be in a class of twenty-eight, when that may not actually be the nature of the law.
So, if you would let me bear with me. We have to use a snapshot in time, okay? I can't use yesterday's numbers because then I really wouldn't be speaking a lesson. So we use the October third snapshot. I'm not saying that things haven't changed in the schools and that they may have been able to split up some of the larger groups since it's too smaller, too smaller may have consolidated into one larger. I can't speak to that because we can't do this. We're using the October third snapshot, and I'm sure people who are in the school today would say that's not exactly right. And it's not right because several months have passed. But we have to use something static to do what we're doing here, okay? But I think it tells the story, even if it was just on October third, there's a story to read in that table, which is that all schools are not created equal, all grades are not equal. And there are some places where at least even for a short period of time, there were a very large number of children in a classroom beyond what the district itself has set for its own targets. And that it's very hard, you have twenty-eight kids, do you split into two fourteen students' groups? That's a resource issue. There's dollars in that salary, plus benefits, plus retirement, plus everything that goes with that teacher. Adding one teacher is a substantial investment. What's the, around a hundred thousand, what is that? Seventy thousand? So in a constrained financial environment, with limited numbers of children, those are very difficult decisions, twenty-eight versus fourteen, that have to be made. So I think there's a lot to look at in that table. There, yes.
I have two better questions. One, a compensation, two, for your next phase, your savings and long-term savings, can you add a column that tells you what percentage of the total budget value is, so the alternative is a hundred thousand from here, can you incorporate it in the big report? What percentage of the total budget is that helping, or if you can do that?
Just for information, the fiscal seventeen budget, which is usually what, about thirty-two million? But sure, we can add the percentage. And this is partially an exercise in finances, but also in academics as well, but yes, we can do that.
So, and my other question is on the front, you have the enrollment by October third. For the brain tree, it's going to include a preschool, but in the other ones you do? So I understand the school is somewhat separate, but it's still enrollment, so what does that, what is that budget and why is it included, not in the first charts, but in the rest of it?
It should have been in the first chart. I should have had that column.
So in your opening, or not, somewhere along the line, you mentioned the next nine months. You're, so that, it sort of implies that you'll be part of something for the next nine months. What, and I know this sounds a little robotic, but what do you consider still in your scope to be working with us? Now that this has all been done, this is phase two of the presentation and all that, what's, in your mind, what is still in your scope?
And we're still working that out, but some of the things I think we can hopefully help you with is to narrow it down to a smaller number of alternatives for public, more public discussion, to talk more about what could make those schools really great, and how much of those dollars that we might save in one place could and should be redeployed, and for what purposes? You know, paras, or more science teachers, or whatever it is, to make those schools really great. So help with that as we're narrowing, to also let people know what that investment is, the new investment in our kids is going to be. We are hoping to help the district with a little bit more deeper dive into the special education cost containment. I know you have a consultant working on that as well, but we would like to help you with that. We have some broad ideas, but I think we can get down into a higher level of detail because that is one of the big cost drivers. And right now, I don't have repurposing the buildings, I'll have to cost out what that would involve. It's obviously come up from multiple people, how to reuse the buildings.
Harvest the load in, of course.
Yeah. So I just have to, maybe can I let Ray again, talk about right now a little bit?
So with the options that the college center is presenting to the district, there is obviously a need for additional assistance going forward to put the option into reality. So the town of Hubbardston applied for and was awarded a one hundred thousand dollars in a compact grant. That will allow us to hire a facilitator that will work with the district to put that option into a reality, but will also work with the towns individually to see what purposes they could use if they have a school that's closing in their town, but also to work with the towns collectively to see if there's other cost-saving measures that don't relate to the district, such as shared services. So we're then putting out that in the next couple of weeks.
So this is an additional money that the Commonwealth has contributed to this process. They funded, all the activities that happened to date, it has been funded by a grant. In recognition really on how complex, yet how important this issue is, the Baker-Polito administration is adding another hundred thousand dollars to the process, part of which really importantly is for a facilitator who's not us, because we're a lot of the data people. We want a facilitator to help design a community process that will contribute to as some of your resource people, but that they will be facilitating that part. One minute, actually, I have her first one on you.
Two things. I wondered, I remember that at some point in brain tree, there was to tuition in some kids down there. Is there, since the, in a lot of ways, the town boundaries are so porous anyway, is there any thought ever of, for instance, in Harwick, since I feel like we're very likely to lose all of our school choice students back there, and maybe some of our students to where? Is there ever a consideration of, for instance, over the border in Barry, moving toward, you know, looking at it more as who's closest to a school?
So her question had to do with the school assignments for the students, and if, your example was, if some of the school choice into Harwick go to someplace else, could some of the students from the brain tree move into Harwick? That is one of the fundamental pieces that we've been sort of saying is a constraint that is set up in the structure of the regional agreement. Your regional agreement, as Bill was saying, is designed to compel the district to make space decisions that are not always based on the best programmatic reasons. So literally, the agreement says, students shall go to school in the school that they, in the town they reside in, period. There's only a few small exceptions, if their IEP requires services that are elsewhere, if an administrator in one school says that they have needs that should be met someplace else. And each individual child has to go to the superintendent's level to be approved to move from school A to school B. That's a tremendous constraint that's locking the class up, right? You have fewer kids, logically you would do that, right? Logically, you'd say, I've got so many first graders over here, I've got so many over here, hey, why don't we bring them together? You can't do that under the agreement today. And right now, the agreement can only be modified if every town votes to modify the agreement. So everything has to be approved by everybody at all times, perhaps, is the sort of theme behind the way the agreement is set up.
You already answered that.
What?
My question.
Oh, okay.
Monica, can I just say, and there are lots of ways to do that, right? I mean, there are lots of ways to do that. I've been in districts that were single, kind of have buffer zones, and people within certain areas could go to either of the schools and we tried to assign them, where they wanted to go to school depending on numbers. There are lots and lots of ways to do that, if you gain any degree of that flexibility.
Yeah, I have to say, as a committee member, I have a bit of, more than a bit of frustration. We knew, before we started, all of us knew, we could save a million and a half dollars, or thereabouts, if we did closings. But closings would not be popular. The towns really like and value having a school in their town. So given that, what can we do? And I've not heard much of that. Look at surrounding, this is, we've done all of that, and not really had much success. I really was enthused that you have a town planning background, because that's a bit different perspective than your education background or raise. Okay, fine. What do we do with these buildings? And I know you said, well, each one's different. Well, each one being different isn't an answer to us. Can something be done? It makes sense, well, my friend from Hubbardston, who is a very bright fellow, is on as a selectman, would look at this and say, well, yeah, closing a building makes economic sense, but our town wouldn't really wish that. It would be very difficult for our town. And his school is one of the ones that's up for consideration, clearly. I'm just not hearing what we can do beyond what we already have thought, posited, considered, explored. And one thing I'm not hearing, and I suspect isn't available, is the state, clearly we're not going to get money for it from them. No, we all know that. They're part of the problem, they're part of the solution, to bring in an old archaic statement. But can they do some encouragement or some help in consolidation? Do you guys have any influence? Does anybody have any influence? Does anybody see that as a possibility? When I went to school here, we had Barry High School and Harwick High School, and Hubbardston went up to Gardner and all, well, the state came up with monetary, we give you so much a kid if you regionalize. Well, fine, we regionalized, and over time, it has just dissipated and dissipated. We'll fully fund the transportation. Sure, a year later, we get a percentage of the, but is there anything there? But I'm really thinking from your town planning background, what can you do? From the standpoint of what do we do with these buildings? How, as we close them, we say, yeah, we save a million and a half. Well, great, well, what's the town? What's the impact on them? Do they then pick up a million and a half bucks to run the building? Or does, it just, is that a, you know, you can't just go one way and not look at the balance of the other way. So I have to say, I really have a frustration, and I had great enthusiasm for the background and the skill and so forth, and what you looked at and all. And I share hope, over the next nine or ten months, you can get into this and show us how consolidation makes sense, it would be sense to the town, or other uses of the buildings, or additional uses of the buildings, and the town can keep their schools for some useful purpose, their kids at some level or whatever. Fifth and sixth comes up here, so that makes this building more viable, and something else happens there. I'm assuming that if fifth and sixth came up and you still kept your school, that that would be better than saying, well, we're going to, we're going to close the school. I'm assuming.
I think everyone would say that.
Yeah, I think so. So you have the start of something, but then we just need to go further, see where can we go? How can we make it work? What's sensible for a town where we can get some savings? And I know you talked about, well, then we get savings to put the money back into the education. I think the money would, to a large degree, go to suppress assessments. I think we have a pretty good education here. We're doing pretty well, and we're just clawing to hold on to it, because we have all of these tuition kits coming in, because we do have better schools. We do have rotting in art and music and theater and good trips and, you know, our kids have gone to France and they've gone to Hawaii in the last year and other, you know, all that kind of stuff. And parents like that, and I think really value that. That's why we have the school choice, not because our mascot looks better than some other guy's mascot. So I don't know if you could say anything that would help going forward, but I have to say, from my feelings and from what I hear from the folks that I talk to and listen to, that sure would be helpful.
Monica, could I make just a comment? I don't think I need the mic, I'm used to being in this room and shouting out. I think what Rayanne had brought to us, the town of Hubbardston and their efforts to put together another year of grant work, she said a very important thing, that the towns, we're sort of, we're looking at the schools like it's the school, isolation to the town that needs to look at all the consolidation requirements. The fact that we all have to have our own fire, and we all have to have the comfort anchor. And do we, could we look at, you know, a more regionally-based DPW action, a more regionally-based fire department, a more regionally-based safety protection, our police departments, our EMS, our ambulance, or whatever? We haven't taken any time to look at that, because we are spending a lot of money having how many police chiefs. Now, I know you said superintendent, okay, in Washington, superintendent may be the most highly paid individual in an individual town, but the individual town is only paying a portion of that individual salary. And but when you look at, and I always say, I know you're not upset, you don't love my salary, and it's way cheaper now, and you're probably happier about that, but in the old days, I would say, fine, just give me... But in the old days, I would say, "Fine, just give me what it costs you to hire your four chiefs of police and your five chiefs." Probably happy with that, and I wouldn't double the salary. My concern is that the communities have to vision the community. What do we want our community to require? We want the best possible schools. And I really want the best EMS. And I really want the best opportunity for us to have our Chapter 90 money used appropriately. And I know I speak to the selectmen who struggle to get their piece of the municipal budget and to do the things that they have to do. But they're working in isolation. It's far cheaper to run a school than it would be to have individual school leaders trying to operate within our, within our five towns. We know that. We know that we should have taken Peterson. We should have. Peterson voted to come in, four towns voted to say yes, and one town said, "Nah, we don't want to do that." And we're crippled at our ability to expand our footprint in a time when we should have been doing that. But we started declining enrollment. But so I really would say, I really, you know, commend you, Rayanne. I'm saying, we have to look at the town, the whole community, how we operate. We are aligned, all the fire trucks we have, it's like, okay. Is that the right number if we begin to really have a more consolidated focus on other town services? I don't think you can fix your town budgets or the uses of your buildings by just building the schools because you know Hubbardston, you need space for other things. This space, maybe we should be ready to fix, maybe we should. But we know that without looking at the whole, we can't fix this part. We just can't, we just can't. Or we could, but we just can't. And if it's so important to us to have an individual school but with shared space in order to do something in addition to just having, you know, the students and the people and, like Peter said, in Braintree, they just building needs for something else in addition? We have to use our space, we have to take what we have and use it better. And if we don't, you can talk about these schools forever and you're not going to fix the problem, we're just not. And I can't say enough about what Dr. Lee says. He's absolutely spot on about how we can make our schools better. You know, having 28, 30 in class is not because we want to, it's because we no longer afford them, we have three years. 15s, 14s, 13s, 12s. We can't afford that anymore, we just can't. So what happens is, we get moved because of the regional agreement and so we're kind of, we're stuck. And so it's going to be the towns to work with us, but you can't fix your budget, you have to fix it, all the other stuff that we have consolidated. It just needs.
That's a better articulation than what I said of why your town planning background is a different perspective and why I think it's so important as part of this thing that we're looking at.
Well, all of these things that both of you talked about, they're all intertwined. The health of the district, the health of the towns, the number of students, the numbers of families attracted, the numbers of jobs. They all sort of swirl around and they pull and foot on each other. So it is hard to just look at one aspect of it. Um, clearly, the issue of the reuse of buildings is a big one for the towns. We went months ago to talk to the state about that, that we knew that was going to be an impediment. How, you know, what are we going to do with those buildings? So I think, Bill, it's time to do that again now that we have this big report and to say, one of the linchpins of this is some money to let towns reposition their buildings. And it would not be a lot of money and it would be sort of one-time money, right? That you had capital needs or some way to reuse the building, but that would help a lot rather than the idea that it would be empty going forward. I totally emphasize that people are not going to want to vote for something that. That's part of that picture of painting the positive end results that all of this analysis could eventually paint. But we hear you on that and we hear you on the shared services. One, two, three, four, yes.
I just wanted to echo about the regional agreement and still things you talked about. And I just wanted to kind of echo, so everybody can see us, what as a committee we have done. I have only done the committee for 10 years. And in those 10 years, we agreed with the regional agreement, which was written in 1983, prior to reform of 1983. There was a language in that conference, that regional agreement, that talked about hiring principals. We assumed we jumped high in principles. So we had a regional agreement that was archaic and old. And another example of that regional agreement at the time was when we gave the Braintree Health Care and we saw the declining levels. The declining levels of voting, and the way the agreement was written, we had 14 superintendents, now 15 because we're alone with Hubbardston. So that's 15 members. But the previous language, we really updated it that if we had to make some changes, the changes were only, the only people on the board that could vote were the members from that given town. So we were going to experiment with the OKAM and Braintree 3K through one model. The one member from Braintree had to agree. I'm prepared, I'm representative of value, and I'm on the committee as a whole. We had no second, we were discussing issues. And today, the person who we voted to approve was the OKAM members and the Braintree members. Now, if one OKAM member said, "No," the perspective that we wanted to do that made total sense would not happen. So that was one of the linchpins that forwarded us to project us to look at it. Ed Leonard was the former chair for the committee for many years. When I was in the committee 10 years ago, I asked the chair, "Why do we have an agreement that's written in 1983 with these out of odd issues?" At that time, it's the one that said, "Be careful that you vote it, you may never close it. You need five towns to open." I think this is very relative information because you're saying that it's an impediment. It's also, not just an impediment, it's a language that we live in. And so we agreed to that, we all agreed. Um, the committee, we got invited five times. People like this gentleman was on. We invited both representatives because it's a regional agreement. And it's not just our way, it's our way as a community. So we changed the language. We had, we had to have a lawyer with us to, not pay the same money, we couldn't do this. We were able to get the proper language in updating with the reform law, but also how to handle potential closures and directions of a district. So a 1983 agreement was updated, voted at all of our town meetings three years ago, which is a huge feat. All of us agreed, we changed the language to make proper changes. And one of those changes was the superintendent did have a little more authority. But the member that talked about the example of the sharing of OKAM and Braintree. So if you wanted to close a school or do anything, if five members of Barry and one said, "No," it wouldn't happen. So we, as a committee and the community together, said that wasn't the best way and representation. We stayed the same, it was the same law. Um, it took many leaving, it took people's, you know, opinions, just like how we do here, a process to respect every opinion and we have to finally get to a decision. And we will get to a decision in this district. Closing or consolidating or whatever we do, we will get there. And we won, we'll work and we'll make those decisions that are right. But I'm giving you an example because, yes, I may not be as, as liberal in this committee, just talking to people, stating about where that falls with our agreement. Our regional agreement is a very good agreement. And now that gives you authority, you're a ship along to a community to close the school. Now, we have intractable choice. We can make those changes and adaptations as we go along and even have intractable choice. So you can get kids, students that would become OKAM or go to Barry. So as we continue to rock on these processes we're doing, it needed to have an understanding of how the regional agreement needed to be amended. Had we worked through all five towns and to agree upon and it's up to date with proper language and also vetted, the module can attest. It had to be approved with the Department of Education, the Commission of Education had approved the regional agreement, changes. So it's not just us working in the vacuum. Lastly, Braintree and Hardwick have already shared police force. One of the first in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We had shared superintendency and shared services seven years ago. So we have stepped up. While it has continued, and these towns around here do step up and rock. Thank you for giving a couple of things for that. It's just we've got to educate us because when we say comments that we don't know what they mean, that there needs to be some consolidation. Braintree and OKAM, they're starting to move with police force. College towns now looking at the pressure on them all. That's a good, good thing. She's already talking about the shared services and others. Lastly, we were always accused of lack of transparency. I've had a problem with that, I've always had a problem with that. We need to be more transparent, we need to be transparent. We have staff there, and I know Steve was here and Steve is on the committee, and we wanted, we were ready to spend 90, 10 hours of the budget, if you want to go line by line and ask, everything that we spent. It is there. We don't hide money, we don't stash money, we don't overpay our staff and we value our staff. From a cafeteria employee to a proxy judge to a teacher to support personal administration. So I'm just trying to echo the importance of the work that we do and I want to hear from all of you, but as we're in the debt, we're going to have to make some serious decisions. We have to pay for our education and we have limited educational positions and I think maybe we should have decisions. Why do you think Braintree and OKAM decided we had a great model that worked and we could do a K1 and 2 through 6 model? Because we had class sizes of eight and six. How healthy would that be for your son and daughter if they had six already? And no decision among the service. And it's a public school. And we also talked about the psycho, social, emotional, also academic world. So I appreciate all the data, there's more information, and I really wanted to echo because it happened in our watch about the regional agreement. And there are ways to make intractable choice work and there are ways, I understand consolidating. I am still knocking on the door for a little curfew. I'll make that public comment. I still want no curfew, eventually kind of us. I want other towns to tuition folks into our district. I have, we have great programs. I want to see ID sale completed, AP courses, ROTC, and we continue. Or we continue to not do anything and then we lose the fabric of what we believe we want. So I appreciate, I needed to talk about that regional agreement because it happened to a manager's chair and working with people, but it couldn't happen without everybody sitting here that came to the agreement to do that.
I think my dad was lecturing me the whole time. Sorry, I crashed.
I have, there's a bunch more questions. I want to thank you for that. Um, just one observation on all of this. I see a team forming here, a team that's been in place but that's also growing and becoming more powerful for that, so thank you for that because that history is part of the context. Um, I'm going to take like four more questions, but I really want to talk about next steps from you all to hear about how to do this. I have one gentleman, three, four. I'm not stopped, but we can talk about that later. I just got to move on, yes. Yes, ma'am.
You spoke, a follow-up to what's been said here and a follow-up to what you spoke about previously in terms of aspirations. I would expect that the money saved, as someone else mentioned here, the, would, it is, it is your recommendation that that be put back into the school in terms of programming and in terms of making the school better. What does better mean? How is it measured and how long is the check?
It's a recommendation to put the savings back into the school, thank you. And that's, that, can we write that down as a theme? And not all of it have to go back into the school? Um, we don't have to deal with that right now. I like your thinking because it's what we're talking about, it's how to make this a better outcome at the end of the day, that it's not just a cut.
I'm asking for metrics. I'm asking for metrics and criteria.
So how to redeploy savings and to develop metrics. I think that's a good next step for the process, right?
There is no standard way to do this now?
Ma'am, if you want, sorry.
Only for six.
Are you asking a different?
Yes and no. Um, they exist, I would recommend them. I think that's a great community conversation. I mean, I think if you look back at two of the districts that I worked in, that, that, what you just laid out, is a community conversation. Yeah, sure, we use research and best practice to come to what we, we were going to look for in the success of our districts and our districts. And it went far beyond sort of M-PAS and those kinds of teachers, right? But that, that is a community conversation. Because I could tell you it's this and you could look at that and say, "Well, that's a good start." But that's not what I was looking for and that's the point.
But there, there isn't, is it something that most, most communities, most, most cities and towns, let's say, just within Massachusetts, agree our objective standards? For example, the, you know, type of test scores, test scores? But there, there are perhaps some other things? A number of AP classes? A number of ROTC participants or whatever?
Sure, but, but what?
Educate me in terms of what those metrics are.
Sure, there are. And my point is that that's a community conversation. Sure, there are some places that have been, have been forced into, many of the urbans have been forced into a strict measure that success is around that accountability standard. I, I sort of reject that, right? And say, the things that you've talked about, although I want to be more nuanced with them, I, I'm more interested, for example, the last district I was in, our conversation, was not so much about number of AP courses, but what number of kids, we were interested in more kids taking AP courses, at least one. So we met, one of our measures, our metrics, was that we measured ourselves against that. We cared much less about the scores than we cared about kids being able to access that curriculum. And I guess that's what I mean. Other people might be more interested in the scores. That's a community value conversation, right? I would argue a certain way on that, you might disagree with me and that would be great. That make sense?
I guess so.
There are the M-PAS scores, which we did show up on the screen where we're seeing some downturn, which is one of the trends that we think this process should focus on, not having that line continue. There's graduation rates, some of it's already in our press report. I think, I think what maybe Bill and I are trying to do is take your point, which is a good one, and we can apply it to the outcome, right? We can say, you know, "We want to consider these alternatives and these are the goals we have as a community to come out of these alternatives." And then you can go back and test it. And that was one of, I don't know if Michael wants to. One thing we've sort of said in our values report is, "Let's set some measures to this process so that we can look back two years, four years, eight years and say, 'Did we achieve what we had tried to achieve with this exercise?' Because, again, we don't want it to be grounded in dollars. It should be grounded in student achievement and in community vitality." So I put it on the next step list because as we have continued conversations, we can try to tie what we're trying to do to those values into those measures going forward. But each community could come up with its own. Um, gentleman with the pleasure.
Um, I have a question about your table with the school choice showing the deficit. Is school choice supposed to go away? Is that just for elementary students or is that overall for high school and elementary?
That's a really good nuance to pick up. It's the complete elimination of school choice revenue in compared to the alternative. But as you pointed out, so much of that is in the middle and high school that that has a big weighing down on the, on the revenue side.
Yeah, to me, that shouldn't be shown on this table because you're not changing the high school, you're changing the elementary schools. So if I look at this right now and I say, "Whoa, if they close this school and people are from where are going to send their kids all the way to Barry or OKAM? And, and now, you know, we're actually shutting these schools down and it's costing us money." It doesn't really make sense like that.
Well, it only does because if kids don't come in at the elementary level, it's a different metric for who might come if you only open seats up at sixth grade or seventh grade or ninth grade. Well, it is, it's fact, it's the way it's done statewide, you can measure. It actually happens that way.
Twenty years ago, I came here as a school choice student along with 50 something kid out in the middle school letup.
Yep, and at that time, most of the districts around here weren't taking school choice. You weren't seeing the number of charters that you have in this area. You weren't seeing the number of private options and other kinds of options that you have. And you weren't seeing decline in enrollment. So that's important data, but it, but it isn't necessarily- So that's important data, but it, but it isn't necessarily predictive of what will happen now. And, and again, I can only tell you from experience that when, when you change the configuration of when you accept school choice, you, you, you may think you've always brought in X number at whatever grade. That will change that when you go take it into the elementary will change what your numbers at middle and high school look like.
Bill, Tonic, I'm wrong. There is an interim where the district could say, we have X numbers of seats
Yes.
in this grade and Y numbers in that grade and none in this other grade.
Yes, that's probably what you would end up doing, that you don't do as much of right now, is you would actually declare X number of seats. You might have Y number of applicants. And then by law, you have to do a lottery for those seats by law.
I mean, I think I'm getting at the same thing that you are is you're saying if they don't commit to elementary, they're not going to be in the overall, so it affects the overall budget. So you consolidate the schools and make it, so the school choice students choose not to come to this too far or there's too many students in the school at that point for school choice, that affects the budget overall. I'm saying the same thing as you are. They're not going to come if they can't or if they're too far.
Right. I was trying to answer what would happen at different grade levels. But, but, but yes, you, you, you may get to a point depending on your, on your percentage of utilization where you have, have to declare, we have this many seats in first grade at this grade, and you may end up in a lottery situation. And that may or may not be less than what you're doing now. You certainly have to be a little bit more thoughtful.
In, in part, we did that table because some of the elementary alternatives, um, use up a lot of the classrooms and we get to a very, very high utilization rate. So one of the, um, smaller levers that the district has is whether to accept school choice or not in varying grades. So it's a way that one of the, the two, the end of the day two school alternatives can be made, um, give you some flexibility to be able to have fewer school choice students now and next year. And, but then if the school enrollment starts going down, you can accept more in. So it's, it's, it's a tool that can be used to fine tune the numbers of students in the different grades. But I think you're right, at the middle and the high school level, there's no logic to say no school choice because there's so much space and there's so much school choice kids coming in that it's important to keep that. So we can, we can parse that out. I think that's a good point.
I guess the next question I had to kind of touch on that is, is there any projection as far as consolidation as how that affects people that want to be into the community? And that money that won't be coming in because like, for instance, we, we just bought land in Harvick. We have three small children. We wanted them to come to school in Harvick and we can, well, now with consolidation, we're actually thinking about selling our land because we don't want our kids to be out of bus for power to go to Barry or to Oakham or whatever. Is there been any projections on how that affects the overall community?
There's no firm way to project individual family choices. There, there are important choices that every family has to make. So we can't project exactly what's going to happen. Um, I think we all want to come up with an alternative that's the best outcome for everybody, but some families may say that's still not going to work for them. But we don't know. There might be other ones that say that's a really good outcome for me. And a lot of our focus on the programmatic side and on the academics is to make the schools as strong as they can be programmatically and academically so people are, are, are attracted to it. I, I think many of us would send our kids farther if we knew they were going to get a great education. Then you might do, send them to a school that was not as great.
That is a comment I have to make. So that in your report, that was from a fellow website, very detailed and detailed. There were five studies that cited, cited that showed property values of communities that shut their school down and how these property values declined in many of these communities. That is a concern. If they're not a good alternative to the town, if elementary schools get a little stuck an hour or two for another community, what is that going to do to property values and consequences in the past?
And that has come up. And that's why we put that appendix there so people could really do that research. Um, there's also studies that talk about the performance of the school as also affecting property values. So part of the, part, and you're, I had sort of a sequence, so I'm going out of order. Um, part of the reason we put that in there, this is an important conversation. Okay, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not disagreeing with your concern in any way. What we also need to weave in is if we continue on the path and there's more cuts, fewer kids, more cuts for your kids, more cuts for your kids, there is a trajectory there that is not good for any of the students and it's not good for property values either. So there's hard choices here. They're hard choices and they're not choices that I would wish on anybody. Those are not choices you would wish on yourself, but, but they're, they're there and we have to weave in all of these different factors. I want to get back to my process. Do you have any more questions?
Well, so it's all about money, obviously.
No, it's not.
It's, it's about, it is and it is. It's about the students getting the best education, but it comes down to money because you can't run the school properly without the right money. Has there been any study showing how much the property tax increase would be per person per town to make that school feasible and keep that school open?
So we haven't done that exercise. You're, you're talking, well, have you had a couple of vehement, no override comments?
It could be a hundred dollars per person per year to keep that school open in the town. We don't know that answer.
We could do that calculation every year.
And, and the point that we, we tried to make in the town's report is at some point the students in the school building are so low that you can't do the kinds of inclusion that should be done for the special education students. You have a hard time doing specials that all the kids should have access to. So it's not just putting the dollars in to keep it open. It's how, how are the lowering and lowering and lowering student body affecting the, the school environment for all the kids that, that are remaining there?
Yes, but then you have to question, if, I'm an animal science professor and you have. So when you see the report and you see that science scores are dropping, I have to question whether or not you should be focusing on specials and international baccalaureate and AP scores and not getting back to basic sciences.
Well, I would argue that and say that there are actually the specials do enhance that because having music actually enhances that.
Okay. So, time out. I need to call time because we had some ground rules and I should have said them last time, okay? We're going to raise hands. We're going to treat each other respectfully. All of what people are saying here are valid, good concerns we talk through. We have a limit for today, but we have time to continue to have these conversations, okay? I don't want there to be questions that are unasked and unanswered. I just, for today, I have to call some time so that we can talk about process going forward because I, I really would like your thoughts on how to make this as healthy and as constructive a process going forward. So I'm sorry I had to cut you off. I don't like to do that. Um, I think I offered one more person, yes. And then, I'm sorry, I already picked somebody. Can you give me one more?
I was number four waiting. I was. So I have a kind of a two-part question. One, I think, which everyone would like to answer this, I think, is when you're talking about making changes, what sort of timeframe are you looking at? And kind of looking back on what someone else had said earlier, would it be discrepancies within, um, class sizes within the district? Um, would it be feasible or a reasonable thought to make it an option even as soon as next year for the classes that are larger to have inter-district school choice?
So first question was how much time do we have to sort of do this? I believe by the next budget cycle, um, for the health of the district, there needs to be some, some changes made.
About me for next year?
For next budget year. So this time next year, we really need to be knowing what the plan is, I think, having it approved at the towns because it's going to influence the next budget night. I believe this year is going to be another difficult budget year for the towns. So even with a pretty modest budget increase.
Three percent? Or do you wish? One point three.
1.3% increase in the district's budget for fiscal eighteen is.
Two point eight.
Let me just say it's a, it's a quite modest, from my opinion, increase to get into fiscal eighteen is still going to be a, a tough one for the towns. So it's not going to go, no. I have to move on. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So timing wise, we have to be, this time next year, we really need to have a consensus about what's happening and, and be moving it forward through the, through the budget process and the approval process. Um, and then you have another question. And so allow inter-district choice right now. Let's talk about that going forward. I don't have a, an answer. It's not going to benefit financially what we're talking about, um, but it may even help some of the, the class sizes. So I'd like to turn up to talk about how to have a conversation. We have some ideas, alternatives on the table. There's probably going to be more alternatives. I have to call time.
And it's actually, it's a simple question.
Excuse me. There's a, there's a way to do this. If you can't follow what she wants to do, we'll stop right now.
Okay, but I was for number four and I waited very patiently because my son's waiting for me.
Okay, so, so please allow her to ask.
Okay. So on all of these alternatives that you suggested, my only question is how does it affect teacher-wise? Are teachers going to lose their jobs? Are any, I haven't seen any of that in there. I'd like to just maybe potentially see if both, when those schools get canceled, are teachers potentially going to lose jobs? Like, are we going to lose maybe two teachers, five teachers? I just would like to see that on the next report potentially.
That's actually a good process.
Thank you. I got a question.
So there are details behind every number that are in there of custodial or office support or teachers that are in all those alternatives. And I think it's, that's why I wrote details for the savings, where, where are they generated from? I think that's a totally fair process going forward question. So as, um, Rayanne from Hubbardston is thinking about this facilitator and what we would need from this facilitator, as we are thinking as a team about how to help in terms of information, in terms of analysis, um, what are your ideas for this next phase on how to make it as great as possible? One, two.
So I'm hearing there's, there's a lot of people in this room who want to be heard and there's a lot of frustration. And I believe most of what's come out is that the best solution for the communities is not going to be the easiest solution, the simplest solution. It's not just going to be close to school, it'll be all done, everything will be great. There's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts here and there's a lot of community buy-in that's going to need to happen. And I feel like having a hundred or more people in a room trying to be heard is a very difficult way to, to continue that process. Is there a plan to have more of the World Cafe model where you're working in small groups, people are weighing in on other people's small group ideas? That is a, is a much more productive kind of process where somebody comes up with an idea, the small group kind of vets it out and then other groups get to tag on and say like, yeah, I like this, but let's massage it a little bit or let's explore that or what's, what do the numbers look like for that?
So, um, the World Cafe model was the type of meeting we had when we did the community conversation. And I, I'm a hundred percent agreement with you that that's a better format to talk about really difficult community level issues. So I would like to get back to that too. So I put that down. We had to do this because we had just such a volume of information we needed to get out. I'll, I'll rethink this process too because I wanted this to be a really great meeting. But yes, going forward, and these are table level conversations where you talk to neighbors and move through the room and get to meet with a lot of different people on a topic or a series of topics. So for example, we could talk about ideas for reusing buildings. We could talk about some of those metrics that we would want to see coming out of this process. So there's a lot of conversations that we could have. Um, we could talk about some of those dilemmas that families may face with the property value versus the travel time versus the great academic program. And, and we can have those conversations. So thank you for that point. I have, yes.
I feel like we're at a point where we have to start re-envisioning what our definition of community school is. And I think that New Braintree, Oakham have sort of taken a step in doing that by consolidating together. I know, I'm a New Braintree resident, so, um, and I, and I'm happy to have expanded my, my definition of my community to include Oakham. I'm happy to do that with any of the other abutting towns. I have kind of an emotional response to talking about my children going to Hubbardston, which doesn't abut my town in any kind of stretch of the imagination. So if there is any way that we could talk about students going to a neighboring town and if that means my New Braintree student needs to go to Ruggles Lane and that Ruggles Lane student needs to go to Hubbardston to make that feasible, I think I've heard you saying that these are just seats and not necessarily no children are swatted. But I think some clarity for that about people might make it a little more comfortable. So that's, that's mine.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think as far as the question about property value, you do have to look at the property value going down if a school is closed. But on the flip side, you have to look at the property value going down because of the quality of the school. The M-PASS score is going down, the, the towns can't afford the services that they need to provide. That also lowers the property value. And so both sides maybe you look at, it may increase your property value if you have to send your school to the next, your child to the next town over to get, they're getting a better quality of town, so your property values may go up. I'm, I'm product of a district that had to go through this. I was bus two hours each way to school.
In the South Africa, right?
It's just mediocre and right now is one of the best districts in the state because of the hard choices that they had to make.
So if you're in the front, I'll try to repeat, maybe if people in the back. You said property values in terms of not having schools, but also property values are affected by the quality of the school. And there's a number of studies that do that. Also affected by the quality of services the town is able to provide to, to the residents. So again, it's all intertwined. My dad grew up in Puerto Rico and he walked to school in the South. Wanted to.
For next steps, I think it's important if we talk about what the district will look like in three years, five years, 10 years, if we do nothing, if we continue down the same path. Many of us, you know, I, I was a member of the school committee for a number of years. We've looked at this over and over here. We've spent hundreds of hours discussing the condition we're in today, the condition we were in five years ago, and the fears we have for the future. Those fears drove us to where we are today. We take it for granted. We know where we're headed and it's off a cliff. I, the general public doesn't have that same understanding of where we'll be if we choose to sit down and, and do nothing. I, in my opinion, it's not as often to do nothing. We, we talked about the property value going down if we close a school. I can't imagine what will happen if the, the quality of the districts, where we'll be if we do nothing. And one quick note, we talk about a one-hour bus ride if you send your kid to another town. I live about two miles from my school. My son gets on the bus first, he's on the bus for the whole town before it gets dropped off, two miles away. So it doesn't really matter if you're going to Hubbardston, from Hubbardston to Barry or Oakham to Oakham. It's, it's a long bus ride and it's worse kids that get on the bus.
I think in the report, you go back to the, what Maureen was saying, what others have said. It's really a town issue. Our towns, the property value and everything, it's all related to, people aren't moving here because maybe towns aren't available, maybe jobs aren't available, maybe the way the town is set up, there's no place here. Yes, we all look at small towns. We all look for benefits that most of us know each other. But I think it also comes down to, we have a really good dynamic in our town. Ninety percent, based on your report, I'm reading about it currently, ninety percent of all the funding for the school comes from the presidential. And a big portion of that comes from the retired community. Our retired community is funding our school, funding our town. Things have to change at the town level so that they can change at the school level. It's not just making a great school. It's also finding ways to make it an even greater town. You know, we moved here three years ago.
You know, we moved here three years ago because of the school district. And I want to stay here, try to buy a house, there's nothing that I could do that we can work with. Great, great. So I think that it, it is a bigger conversation with the town and it needs to start now and not open up with, "We're going to consolidate your schools." Open up with, "Let's plan a better town for all the five towns and build a better community for this area," instead of relying on going two hours away or an hour away or half an hour away to town and visiting in our district to the luxury shopping and whatever, so we're just having that conversation.
Do I have hands who haven't asked a question yet? Um, you haven't asked anything.
Another question, but it's a further comment. Uh, it's a further comment because when there was concern about property values falling and a school is closed, I started doing some research and in New York State, it said property values went down. But then another study said that study was inadequate because it looked at property values at a point in time. They needed to look at it over a period of years. And what they found was that the property values dropped and when people realized that things were not as bad as they had thought it was going to be, they rebounded a year later and continued to go up. So they said the first study's fault was looking at it at a point in time instead of over a skin. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
I thought we were just going to add on to hers over there, sort of, um, we just have to consider, and whether it's from an outreach standpoint or, or, or what, that the overwhelming majority of the people who are going to be voting on whether to close a school don't have school kids, I'm sorry. So, um, as far as tying back into what Dr. Allen was saying, which we've talked about a lot, there's a, that majority is going to want to see how, you know, in addition to a property value discussion, there is a, an additional utilization plan so that it's more palatable to that majority, which will basically determine whether or not a school would be closed or not.
Did anybody hear that? And back to you there? The, because I know it's hard to get people on the front. The majority of the people that are going to vote on the school closures are ultimately not parents that have kids in the schools. As we've seen, the more, larger and larger share of the population are older, um, family, older couples or singles without, without kids. So, your point was that the reuse of the building is probably going to be pretty important to, to those voters so that they know what will come behind, um, in, in the alternative where there's a closure in, in their town.
Yeah, just, just a point. On the first page, we have redeploying the savings, you know, into education. In reality, one of the reasons that we're here is that the folks really don't want to tax-override, they don't want to really step up and actively fund what is needed for education right now.
So I think that we really have to understand that there needs to be some tax relief in addition to some redeployment of resources. It's a mix that we come up with that will convince all those folks, the retired folks or whatever, who are funding the education system, that were serious about this.
That part of the dollars should be savings and perhaps part of the dollars are also for redeployment, um, in the back there.
I had a concern about the busing and so he talked about, "Has to live two hours away to the school and spending an hour on the bus." Realistically, if you're going to a much furthered school, then how long is your kid actually going to be on the bus, having to make all of those stops? And how are the roads going to be? Because I know a lot of certain roads, they have a hard time plowing to make them safe and that's going to be really difficult to do.
Thank you. And that's why in some of the alternatives, we're adding bus routes, we're, we're putting in dollars that could be deployed to more bus routes so that they could be reconfigured so that the, that the reconfigurators are less time. But busing is absolutely a question for everybody engaged in the process and we don't have all the answers right now. Yes.
I was just going to speak up in defense of those of us who are older and single, who are not necessarily aligned with the-
Is it single?
No, we're not. Uh, who are not necessarily of the drabber mentality that, uh, expressed by us.
Thank you. So my question for you is, how do we get more people engaged? Um, if we do the conversations, it's important to have a lot of people in those conversations. Way in the back.
If you didn't stand to the meetings at six o'clock in Barry, it would be helpful. If you work till five and Barry's about 45, 50 minutes away, you're pretty much in the place to go.
So later start on?
Yes.
For childcare.
I think in some of our meetings, we did have childcare and we didn't have children, right? So we actually talked to the head. So yes, childcare, easy, done. Later start childcare. What else? How can we reach people?
I think it would be a good idea to, um, to move the meetings around.
Move the meetings around. And I think that's a good point. What I want to make sure, though, is that we get mixed groups, right? I don't want the New Rain Tree people to only feel like they go to the New Rain Tree meeting. But yes, moving it around, but still encouraging participation. Yes, okay.
If you can move it around, when we're talking about school buildings, I've never been in Ruggles Lane. I lived in Parkland, I've been in Parkland Elementary. I went to this school. Um, I've never been in Ruggles Lane, I've never been in Oakham. So if I'm trying to make, um, try to, you know, be part of a major decision about what's going to be appropriate for my child, but other people's kids, I think it makes sense if people see the facility.
Yes, so we'll see the facility.
If you can pull meetings in different facilities so people can see the facility and really understand what you're talking about. And, and as a second piece of that, we're talking about consolidation and closure as a means for including our education, including making better programmatic decisions, but also utilizing space. The last meeting I was at, um, there was a brief touch upon about a vocational aspect of that. I would like to do that at the next step. Discussion about maybe that being a component of, um, if you still have under new experience at the middle of high school, what types of vocational, how many vocational programs could we bring in? Um, and I, I personally would like to do that as a discussion that is in the next steps.
So maybe a staff committee or a meeting around vocational?
Vocational and technical.
Vocational and technical. So maybe with a task force, we could talk about maybe creating a sub-room for something around vocational?
And I just piggyback on that and say truly realistically, what we can look at for programs, vocational programs, and maybe even agricultural, if we have a space that could be utilized with UMass or other avenues, truly have a vocational, technical space?
Great, thank you. I also put tours down. You said move the meetings to different places, but also have tours at some point of the schools so people could come and see them.
I think also a lot of these issues are bigger than just this forum in that people have to get involved. These issues are discussed at school committee meetings, they're discussed at select board meetings, they're discussed at annual meetings. I think people have to stay involved in all aspects of the meetings because that's where many of these things will actually happen.
So, people in this room should also attend some of those other meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the town, town meetings are coming up and the select board meetings generally?
And if I could just add to, to, uh, the tour saying, if our task force need two through four, what we did is the task force would pump through every, I had them in schools, they had to walk through every room in every school. And that was like a, oh, a moment, which it was for us, you know, we, you know, it's difficult, difficult process, but it is something else to do that.
As far as the next steps, I think it would be really helpful if we could have some strong specifics, like she had mentioned with bringing, like, how much do we think we could use in going and like what kind of cost savings, um, could we have by bringing in the, um, vocational education? We talked about spendings all the last time. What would that be in dollars and percentages? We talked about decreasing administration costs, professional development, um, full day preschool. Can we have some concrete numbers as far as what kind of financial impacts all of the different ideas we discussed could have? And also, I think as far as getting more people to come, um, we can somehow bombard them with communication because honestly, I don't know, I don't know anything about that task force. I don't know if like it's just Hubbardston, I don't, I don't know anything about it. I feel like sometimes we get a little left out of the loop and all of us are very busy, everyone works, we have kids, we have activities. So if we can, you know, newsletters, the auto-call that we got from the district was helpful. Bombard people so that they are constantly reminded because they're busy and try to get a better burnout.
Some people said the fire station signs are helpful.
Yeah.
So did I get that?
Just to add after Michelle's point is that, you know, just discussing everything, 90% of our, I'm pretty good with numbers, so forgive me, but a lot of those voters are not parents of schoolchildren. I feel like I knew about this and meant because my kid's from the school. So to get more of a community here, we need to have to go through more than just the school champs, you know, I saw her at that Facebook. You know, I don't know if it's in different places, but that's what I saw. So, you know, a lot of people are, like, I can't think of, but to get out to the, the non-school-aged kids, families, young, older, um, that might come up with, too. Clearly, I've mentioned a community issue with schools.
I could ask the task force town folks to think about how else to reach out to your town residents, whether you're best positioned, whether even mentioning it at a town meeting as an informational item or something like that, um, but how to reach the other non-parents residents we need to, to get to.
It's normal, there's, there's almost 11,000 people on the voting rolls in the five towns and clearly what we got here is not reaching those people. I think we need such more of a mass, you know, these are some good ideas, but I think we need more of a mass effort of, you know, like, maybe a monthly newsletter or develop a website to reach these people. Some kind of way to reach the people that don't come to meetings and the majority of the people who vote is that don't come to meetings. I think we have to reach those, those are people really.
She said there's around 11,000 voters within the, 1100?
1,000.
11,000 between the five towns and how can we try to reach them? So I think maybe website.
One of the things that I've noticed through this whole process is that we talk about the schools. Those people who don't have children, who are the town, older than the town and whatnot, they see school, the first thing they're going to do is not follow us. So by making it a community and make sure that we point this to community growth or, uh, keep it as a community, event help, advancement, helping, boost, whatever we do, try to keep the school as a focal point, off, keep it off of the schools so that people understand it's more of a community, even though we're here because we know that we've got to cut the costs for the school. Problem is, if people say school, not it, but community, they may be more interested.
So his point was that if we advertise the meetings about schools, that some people will just automatically say, "Oh, that doesn't apply to me, therefore I don't need to go." But if we broaden the advertising or announcements more about community vision or community future, of which the schools is part of that, we may be able to capture a larger curve of rhythm. That's a very, very good point. Thank you. Thoughts, I have to go.
I, I take exception to the, the comments that more communication needs to happen from the, the school committee, from the townspeople. The vast majority of the school committee and townspeople that work in this one are volunteers, they're not people. There's a small stipend that covers maybe their gas to get up to the, to the- It's all of them have to, all of them. It's incumbent upon the citizens to pay attention. It's incumbent upon each and every one of us to make sure we're aware of what's going on in our community and to pay attention to what the taxes, what your tax dollars are doing. You know, you can say, "You need to advertise this." Well, who's you? Who's going to do it? You know, these, these people that are on the committee that are fine, they're already business, they're already giving their time. It's more, what we need are people to raise their hand and say, "I'll form a committee from the public to get the word." We need people to step up and do that, not, "Hey, here's an idea, you guys communicate more." It's, the time that people give already is tremendous. And I think it's, it's the wrong approach to say, "You guys need to do more." It's, it's, it comes from-
But there isn't no money for this. This is a grant-funded process. So, I mean, it is fair to say that people need to be brought into the process rather than that they should be somehow seeking out the fact that there's information to be had.
I'm from school committee. There should be, I, I sat on that school committee for about eight years and we have need one or two members of the public come up, rabidize all the time.
Both points are fair, both points are fair. The task force really should get a round of applause because they've been doing this for longer than we have and I would like to give them applause for, for task force. And we do have resources and we're going to try to apply them as widely as we can, but there are going to be a lot of people who are just doing it because it's the right thing and they're spending their own time. All of you here tonight have, have done that. Um, so unless somebody has a burning question slash comment, last two, one and then two.
Just a quick process. During this, in the days we go forward, have you had a focus group in discussion with realtors in town? Talk about, not only about perspectives on where we're going, what the community looks like, and how can we work together because, have, have you done it?
Yes, question is, have we contacted the realtor, realtors in town? We have not, that was not in our first phase of, of work.
Could that be next steps, about a process?
Contacting realtors, um-
For a focus group?
Focus group of realtors.
Perspective on the community piece, which also includes schools.
Realtors are really helpful, they know a lot stuff. So yes, I have no problem doing that. Uh, last question in the back.
If the other common thing that appears, if folks know this is going on, are aware this conversation is taking place, you know, they're not going to go to close their school because they're not even listening.
Because people are not going to listen until it's that school.
They're coming on the show now.
At the end. And I think that's an outcome that hopefully everybody in this room can help with. Um, one, coming up with really great alternatives for people to consider and two, also as this group grows, letting more people know about your participation and so on and so on. So thank you again for coming out. I hope you signed in with your emails so that you can be on the mailing list for future meetings and we're going to keep on slugging away. Thank you.